I'd like to call the September 6 meeting to order. Can we please stand for the pledge in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jackie, can you please call the rules?
Yes. Mayor Evans?
Here.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Here.
Mr. Haskins?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Redmond?
Present.
Ms. Chamberlain?
I have a motion to excuse Ms. Chamberlain.
Motion to excuse?
Check.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
It's my last meeting. I should just say no, right? No thanks. Absolutely.
Ms. Evans?
Yes. All right, that brings us to proceedings. Do I have a motion to approve the council meeting proceedings from August 16? Motion to approve them?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Absence.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes. And that brings us to financial statements. I need a motion to adopt the July 2022 finance report.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
And that brings us to our first public comment section. Anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? I see no one. So that takes us to standing committee reports. Public services?
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Services Committee meeting took place on August 24. I was there, Ms. Chamberlain and Mr. Mitchell, along with Mr. Das, Ms. Worthland, Mr. Hackmeister, and Ms. Bain. And we had a visitor, Mr. David Hemminger. Approval of the minutes, the committee members read and approved the June 16, 2022 Public Services Committee minutes. And then we talked about the trench drain for Laurel Avenue Stormwater Improvements Project. Mr. Das, excuse me, and Mr. Hackmeister discussed with the committee information regarding an install of a trench drain. The install was originally going to be placed on Mill Street along Garfield. After further review, they are proposing to place it in front of the townhouse apartment complex at the top of Garfield. Mr. Hackmeister explained the flow of the Catch Basin and how Mr. Tim Casto from Kleininger's group recommended we contact Core and Main for supplies and trench drain for the project. Core and Main quoted $14,513.97 for the project. Mr. Hackmeister believes that this trench drain will pick up the majority of the water coming down from the hillside and will tie into the two Catch Basins at that location. The Service Department, along with the Waste Water Department, are to install this drain system. Ms. Worthland stated that the $75,000 was budgeted for the project. It has been difficult to find materials for this project. The material is not in stock, and the lead time for the company to receive the parts is eight to 12 weeks. Mr. Das commented that this will make improvements to the storm issues on Laurel Mill. The committee agreed to recommend that the Law Director draft an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a trench drain for Laurel Avenue Stormwater Improvement Project from Core and Main in the amount of $14,513.97.
Second.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes. We then discussed the Brooklyn Avenue paving project partnership with Miami Township. Mr. Hackmeister discussed with the committee how we would like to get Brooklyn Avenue paved. Miami Township has reached out to us asking if we would like to partner with them to get this road paved. Our portion would be $50,766.90. However, the city of Milford area has some full-depth repair, and he is recommending that we increase our portion to $55,766.90 to cover any additional costs that may appear. We may get this project completed by this fall. Miami Township will be billed for the project, and they will invoice us for our portion to pay back to Miami Township. Mr. Das wanted to add that we would like to get a fall paving in. Claremont County engineers have made a solicitation to any villages or townships that would like to participate in the county paving project. We would provide them with a list of our roads that we would like to have done next year, and they would submit it as part of the bid package. It is in our interest, with costs going up, to explore that route. We would need to submit a letter of interest to them by the beginning of next month. In early October, we would supply them with our list of roads. We may need to come back to committee to get authorization to submit the list. Mr. David Hemminger from Milford came in and commented he is a 51-year resident who also owns property frontage on Brooklyn Avenue and feels that the road is in dire need of paving and is happy to know that we are going to go ahead with the paving project. The committee agreed to recommend that the Law Director draft an ordinance authorizing Miami Township to invoice us for our portion of the paving project on Brooklyn Avenue in the amount of $55,766.90.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
We then discussed the waste collection and recycling contract from Rumke. Mr. Das explained that recently council approved the fifth and final year of the Rumke contract. For disclosure purposes, he wanted the committee to know that we have approximately 11 months remaining on our current contract. We are part of a consortium of villages and townships in the greater Cincinnati area and a couple of areas in the Dayton area. The group builds out for waste collection and recycling services. We work with the Center for Local Government who oversees this bid process and works on our behalf. We were hoping to get, as a group, a more competitive bid. Contracts have been finalized, and as a part of the bids, Rumke put in for a three-year contract with Extension One, Extension Two structured very much like what we have had in our 2018 contract. They also put in for a five-year contract, which is a lump sum. Mr. Das reviewed with the committee the three- and five-year contract bid information. After going over comparisons, he asked the committee to consider entering into a three-year contract with Rumke. The committee agreed to recommend the Law Director draft an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year contract agreement with Rumke for the 2023 through 2026 Waste Collection and Recycling Services.
Second.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Then we discuss the engineering services for water supply and discharge line projects. Mr. Das discussed how the two projects have to be done for the replacement of the existing supply line and discharge line before the new water tower is constructed and goes into service. We hope to get started on these projects late this year, but definitely in 2023 so we can have the water tower installed by 2024. We did receive OPWC funds for both of these projects. Forty-nine percent of both of these projects is covered under the Ohio Public Works, and the other 51% we are using are ARPA funds. The water supply line engineering service quote is $51,500. The Wallace Water Tower Discharge Line service quote is $45,000. Brandstetter Carroll is the engineering firm working on the water tower project. Mr. Das feels comfortable recommending that Brandstetter Carroll be the firm that works on these three-legged project since this will all tie together. The committee recommended that the Law Director draft an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Brandstetter Carroll, Inc. in the amount of $51,500 for engineering services for the water tower supply line and for engineering services for the water tower discharge line in the amount of $45,000.
Second.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
The meeting was adjourned at 4:27.
All right, and you can't leave because that was like the fastest. You're the fastest. Yeah, that was fast. Would you read mine now? That was good. That takes us to the Admin Service Committee report. Vice Mayor Russell?
Okay. The Admin Service Committee meeting was held on August 31, 2022. Ms. Chamberlain called the meeting to order at 5 o'clock. Present was Lisa Evans and Kim Chamberlain, staff Michael Das, Pat Worthland, Christine Seltzer, and Jackie Bain. Visitor, Danny Bell. Proceedings from the August 11, 2022 administrative service meetings were approved. Started discussion on tax levy 2023 amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission. Ms. Worthland discussed the annual resolution accepting amounts and rates for year 2023. The county requires this approval each year to accept the property tax rates for the coming year. The established property tax rates of 3 mil for the general fund and 17 mil for the fire EMS levy are still in place. New for 2023 is the park improvement levy at the rate of 3 mil. Claremont County estimates that the millage will collect $565,981 for the general fund, $2,813,821 for the fire and EMS levy. Both estimates are slightly higher than last year. The new park levy millage estimate is $562,633, which is on par with budget. So the committee agreed to recommend that the Law Director draft a resolution accepting amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor for year 2023 as indicated on attached schedules A and B showing rates of 3 mil for the general fund, 17 mil for fire EMS levy fund, and 3 mil for the park and recreation levy fund in the amounts of $565,981, $2,813,821, and $562,663 respectively.
Second.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, mending appropriation ordinance 2021-113, 2022-129, and 2022-158. Ms. Worthland reviewed and discussed a list of proposed amendments to the city's 2022 budget appropriation and transfers. The total increases amounts to $423,548. Alliance share consists of a general fund transfer to cover the cost of paying off the city's debt on 25 Main. The committee agreed to recommend that the Law Director draft an ordinance, amending appropriation ordinance 2021-113, 2022-129, 2022-158, by increasing the individual item as listed on the attached chart totaling $423,548.
Second.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Next, we discuss zoning code update revised legal services. Ms. Seltzer stated that the city issued a request for proposals for a comprehensive update to its zoning and subdivision ordinance in January 2020. On March 9, 2020, the Administrative Service Committee meeting heard presentations from three teams that submitted proposals. The committee liked the expertise of the Manley Burke McBride Dale Clarin team of Elizabeth Fields and Kathleen Ryan. The committee made the recommendation to sign a future contract with Manley Burke McBride Dale Clarin upon the review and approval of the Law Director. The project was put on hold due to COVID. The team of Elizabeth Fields and Kathleen Ryan, now with Wood and Lamping, is still interested in the project. The proposed budget has increased from $50,000 to $58,000. The scope of the work remains the same and includes, one, project initiation and scoping; two, zoning code subdivision regulations, diagnosis, and outline; three, draft zoning code and subdivision regulation; four, public hearing and adoption. The proposed work includes procedural general code revisions such as designing a user-friendly format, establishing efficient development review procedures, eliminating inconsistencies, substantive amendments such as use regulations, signage regulations, natural resource protection standards, and legal issues to ensure the new zoning codes and subdivision regulations conform to both state and federal law. The project is earmarked as a capital funds expenditure in the 2023 budget. Staff would like to begin work on this project in January 2023. The project is expected to be completed in 12 to 16 months. The committee agreed to recommend that the Law Director draft an ordinance authorizing a contract agreement with Wood Lamping McBride Dale Clarin upon review and approval by the Law Director for zoning code update revised legal services totaling $58,000.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
They did have a few additional matters where they just discussed regarding speed limit signs to possibly be placed on High Street, Five Points Landing Fountain donation, overgrown vegetation on Trailhead behind the digital sign, get quote for light to be placed near the parking lot area, also to extend the Dora to Colvold Station on Worcester Pike. So after that, there to be no further business. The meeting was adjourned at 5:29.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Russell? So that takes us to the City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items to report to you this evening. Ohio Public Works Commission grant, as council knows, we've been very successful in the past at receiving those grants, most recently grants for our water line extensions. And we have applied for an OPWC grant for stormwater system portions of South Milford. As most of you know, South Milford doesn't really have any stormwater. This is to be all-new system. So we didn't make application for that. You know, we'll see. In the past, it hasn't been a very strong application, but we're getting indication that there isn't very many applications being done in Claremont County now, so we might be able to put this one in. We'll find out a little bit more in late September when the Grant Review Committee, which I'm actually ironically a part of, meets, and we'll discuss these projects. So let's see if we can get another grant going our way. Jim Trail Park Canoe and Kayak Launch, the city did apply for a private grant on the amount of $50,000 from Verizon. I'm expecting to hear something within the next month from Verizon about that. If we are successful in getting that, that will fully fund the entire canoe and kayak launch in the amount of $295,000 we would receive from grants. We're still on track to have that constructed and opened to the public for enjoyment in the early spring of 2023. Five Points Landing Park, just an update on that project. We're scheduling that to go out for bid hopefully by the end of this month into September. It's expected that we'll have a groundbreaking and some construction activity will commence sometime in late October. We do anticipate that that park will be completed and fully operational by the late summer of 2023. From economic development standpoint, several things are going on in Milford. Staybridge Suites on Chamber Drive is now open. We believe we have a ribbon cutting for that on Friday at 3 o'clock. It's a $15 million investment and is actually the fourth hotel within the corporate limits of Milford. A light industrial building at 910 Lila, which is the old Mark &amp; Andy 3M Pivot Tech Building, has been purchased by PGNA. PGNA is a light manufacturing business that's located on Section Road in Cincinnati. Harbor Freight Tools opened for business in late August. Cincinnati Distilling Nation Kitchen Plan to be open for business hopefully in the next 30 days. And Cascade Southern LLC's Medical Marijuana Dispensary is scheduled to begin construction on their new facility starting next week. We do not have any standing committees at this time, although I do anticipate scheduling at least an admin services for next week. Some reminders, September 14 is our next Planning Commission meeting at 6:00, and then September 20 is our next City Council meeting at 7:00. If I may, real quick, I do want to recognize Ted Haskins. Ted, this is your last council meeting. I take a special feeling with you because I was here six months after you started.
Yep.
And you were actually one of the people, good, bad, or otherwise, that was instrumental in hiring me, so hopefully I have not let you down. But Ted, I just want to let you know, you've been part of over $75 million in economic development that has occurred in your tenure here, over $6 million in grants. You're very instrumental in bringing a Major League Soccer franchise and their practice facility to Milford. You're instrumental in what I'm calling Phase Three of our downtown Milford revitalization and all the things that are going on in our downtown. Public service projects, we talk about generational projects and the things that will be here long after we're in our capacity as public officials and probably in life as well. Water Tower, which, you know, we replaced a water tower that was built in 1955. Five Points Landing, a beautiful park that many in the community for generations will enjoy, a Public Works facility. All of those things are legacies that you're leaving behind in a good way as you leave the community. I think the thing that I'll value the most and that I'll miss the most from you, Ted, is quiet string. And if you don't know what quiet string is, look that up. It sounds like that may be insulting, but it's not. That was a strong attribute with you as a council member that is going to be greatly missed, so I wish you Godspeed and success in your future endeavors.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Das. I appreciate that. I really do. It means a lot. And I'll say a few things here at the end, but thank you. That was very nice. I appreciate it.
I don't ever get really an opportunity. A few mayors have passed and whatever, but intimately, you've been with me since I've been here, and you've helped me professionally as well, and I do appreciate that. I dedicate gratitude to you for that.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for those words, and thanks for all this great news that's happening in Milford. Ms. Russell?
But before Chief Mills comes up and gives us his report, I'd like to move to go into executive session after new business pursuant to Section 3.051 of the Milford City Charter for the sole purpose to consider the appointment of a city official.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now that brings us to the Police Department. Chief Mills?
Good evening, council. I'm still working on my August monthly report, but I did want to give an update on our Citizens Police Academy. Some last-minute recruiting paid off. We have six candidates, or cadets rather, in this year's academy. So it starts tomorrow night, and that will run 11 weeks. So we're very excited to be hosting our 10th Annual Citizens Police Academy. So more to follow on that. I'm sure you'll see us posting a lot about it on Facebook. Speaking of Facebook, our new officers are off to a great start. You may have noticed Officer Brown demonstrating some of his dancing skills down at Patterson Elementary late last week. I'm told that went viral and even aired on one of the local news networks. I didn't see it, but that was a great post. We had a lot of fun with that. 9/11 ceremony this Sunday. I don't see anybody here from Fire, so I want to make sure we remind the public, 1 o'clock at Station 71 at the corner of 50 and 131. We'll be doing our annual 9/11 memorial there. And there was one more thing. Oh, Driven Project, September 25. We're going to do that again. Mayor Evans will be one of our keynote speakers that day. If you're not familiar, that's the supercar therapy for children who are battling some heavy life challenges, most of whom live at Children's Hospital. So more to come on that, but mark your calendars, Sunday, September 25. The parade will leave Milford around 9, come back around 11. The Wyler Facility will be closed just for the, it's just for the event attendees, but the parade route, mostly Milford Parkway to the highway, we'd love for our residents to come out and really support these kids.
Rain or shine, hopefully shine, right?
Yes. It rained last year, so yeah, we're hoping we don't have any rain this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to council comments. I know I have one. As a member of the Kiwanis Club, I just want to say, like, thank the city for partnering with the Kiwanis Club for Oktoberfest last weekend. It was a long day, but I think it was a really good day. Lots of improvements over last time, and we still have not had our debriefing meeting to decide on, you know, changes and improvements for the next one. But the weather was great. Chief Mills did a great job leading the chicken dance with me, so that was fun. And I think the community supported us well. So thank the city for the help with that, especially Taryn. She did a great job supporting us in that. Does anybody else have council comments? So that takes us to new businesses, ordinances, or resolutions.
Okay. Trying to fill Mike's shoes here, at least briefly. You have Resolution 22-638, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
And again, since it's just a resolution, there's no vote or any other readings. Now, on to ordinances. Ordinance 22-166, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a trench drain from Core and Main. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1, the council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the purchase of a trench drain from Core and Main for the Laurel Avenue Stormwater Improvement Project for the purchase price of $14,513.97. Section 2 pursuant to, in accordance with Section 12.05 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by City Council.
Move to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of a trench drain from Core and Main.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-167, an ordinance authorizing Miami Township to invoice the city of Milford for a portion of the Brooklyn Avenue paving project. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1, the council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes Miami Township to invoice the city of Milford for $55,766.90 representing the city's portion of the Brooklyn Avenue paving project. Section 2 pursuant to, in accordance with Section 12.05 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by City Council.
Move to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-167, an ordinance authorizing Miami Township to invoice the city of Milford for a portion of the Brooklyn Avenue paving project.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-168, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with Rumke Waste, Inc. for solid waste collection and recycling services. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1, the council of the city of Milford pursuant to, in accordance with Section 11.09 of the Milford City Charter, hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into and execute an agreement agreement with Rumkey Waste Inc. to provide to the city solid waste and recycling collection services for a three-year period, 2023 to 2026 pursuant to, in accordance with the terms, conditions, and specifications of the agreement, all of which are incorporated herein their entirety by reference pursuant to, in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2 pursuant to, in accordance with Section 12.05 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Move to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-168, An Ordinance Authorizing an Agreement with Rumkey Waste Inc. for Solid Waste Collection and Recycling Services.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-169, An Ordinance Authorizing an Agreement with Branstad Carroll Inc. for Engineering Services for the Wallace Avenue Water Tower. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into and execute an agreement with Branstad Carroll Inc. for the provisions of engineering services for the Wallace Avenue Water Tower Supply Line for $51,500 and for the Wallace Avenue Water Tower Discharge Line for $45,000. The terms and conditions of said agreement are fully incorporated herein by reference pursuant to, in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2 pursuant to, in accordance with Section 12.05 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Move to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-169, An Ordinance Amending Appropriation Ordinances 2021-113, 22-129, and 22-158. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city finance director to amend appropriation ordinances 2021-113, 22-129, and 22-158 by increasing the individual items set forth and listed on the chart attached hereto and fully incorporated herein pursuant to Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Said amendments total $423,548. Section 2 pursuant to, in accordance with Section 12.5 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Move to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-171, An Ordinance Authorizing an Agreement with Wood, Lamping, McBride, Dale, Clarion for zoning code update. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into and execute an agreement with Wood, Lamping, McBride, Dale, Clarion for services to be rendered regarding the updating of the city of Milford zoning code for the contract amount of $58,000. The terms and conditions of the agreement are incorporated herein their entirety by reference pursuant to, in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. The authorization provided herein is contingent upon the law director's review, which he did at the time, and approval of the agreement. Section 2 pursuant to, in accordance with Section 12.05 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Move to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-171, An Ordinance Authorizing an Agreement with Wood, Lamping, McBride, Dale, Clarion for zoning code update.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
All right. I think that's all of the ordinance and resolutions. Do we have any old business?
Well, before we break, I just wanted to take a second and first of all, thank all of you. The chance to sit in this seat and work with all of you has really been an honor and a privilege. And thanks to the voters and everyone in Milford that gave me this opportunity. And I'd like to thank my wife, Julene, for allowing me the time to come down here and do this. And I know she's watching, so thank you, dear. And my four children, Ellie, Danny, Ryland, and Grace, who I know are not watching, but they get to thank you anyway. But to have the opportunity to do this job and try to improve Milford as best you can has really been a gift. And I know the person that sits in this seat next will do a wonderful job as well. Milford's just going in the right direction, and that's because of the wonderful staff and all the people that are sitting up here. So thank you again to everybody. It's really been a pleasure and an honor. Thank you.
You will be missed.
Yes, you will be missed.
Appreciate your, like you said, your quiet wisdom. You're always good, taking it all in and then giving us that opinion and advice, and I appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we are going to go into executive session. We'll be returning just to adjourn. We will not be conducting any further business. So thank you all for coming.